Okay, hello everybody and welcome to the first committee of the whole session for the 2021-2022 school year. I am excited about the agenda we have tonight and how we'll progress through the school year to accomplish our collective goals. And I want to call the meeting to order and start with a roll call. So, given that it is our first meeting, I was thinking we could, each trustee could come on and say hello and either offer some encouragement for the year to come or one of your hopes and aspirations. So trustee Reynolds, you're the first in the square, so you get the easy job because then you get to toss it to somebody else. It's the person at the end that has the tricky job, the second to the end. Okay, go ahead trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Well, hello everyone. And I'm sorry, could you repeat what you'd like us to say about our hopes, what our hopes are for the year or for committee the whole?
Either one.
Well, I'm delighted we're back at committee the whole. And I appreciate everybody sitting around the table and I hope that as we continue, we, what was that famous line that Heather had said, "Let's continue as we begin"? Was that it? Was that the way she said it? She's not here.
Begin as we can continue.
It's let's, oh, there she was.
Say again.
Begin as we planned to continue.
Okay, that's my hope, that we begin as we plan to continue because that is a great way to start.
Who's next, Leah?
Okay, I'm going to go into my top left corner, Donna D'Amelie. It's over to you.
Well, thank you very much. I'm also excited to be back and see so many of us in our orange shirts in recognition of a very important day tomorrow. I think what I'm looking forward to this year is we're coming into the last year of our term and I'm hoping that we are going to see students have better experiences than they did last year as we're getting more of a handle on education, but more importantly, at the committee of the whole table as well as the board table. I'm very, very much looking forward to our, A, the amazing, amazing staff and superintendents that we have, as well as our three new ones in Superintendent Sappoto, Flaher, and Barnes, and most decidedly, just seeing with leadership of our new director Curtis Ennis takes us. I think it's an exciting time with new ideas and I'm looking forward to seeing where that goes. And I'm going to throw it over to the person that I see in my top right corner, trustee Amy Colard.
I better turn my mic on before someone says, "Your mic's not on." Um, so what do I hope for this year? I think what I hope for is that we continue the way that we finished the last year by being so efficient in our meetings and not going over because it does turn the evenings into very, very long nights when that happens. So I'm hoping we're able to conduct our business in an efficient way as well as mindful of all of the impacts that our decision-making will have down the road. Thank you.
And over to...
Over to Chair Grabens, right in the middle of my page.
Well, hello everybody. Great to see all your faces. And my hope for this year is of course very grand. I hope that we eradicate COVID-19. So I know we personally won't do that, but I hope for the world that that happens. So I'm going to now pass this over to trustee Garrett.
Thank you very much. Hi, everyone. It's good to see all of you again and it's, we're all bright orange today. That's pretty awesome. My hopes. My hope for my community is that our, the three new schools get built and build, get built quickly. And my hope for us as a board is that we continue to work the same way that we do in our own lanes and that we remain healthy. And over to my top right, which is trustee Gray.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Happy to be reporting in from the hills. Wow, what are my hopes for this year? My hope is that we continue on this path that we've started through this entire term and that is to continue to support student needs and to address the challenges and identify the opportunities that lie ahead. I look forward to the work of our student trustees. They're such a vital and integral part of our board and so I wish them well and hope that everybody has a wonderful year. So I'll kick this over to trustee Amos.
Well, hello everyone. Happy New Year. I always feel the beginning of the school year is the start of the new year, even more so than what's pledged on the calendar. And I always see it as a place for everybody to start afresh in their schools and their classes and their jobs and for great things. And we're all thinking about all the great things that are going to happen and that's where we are right now. And that's why I always feel that this is a time of opportunity and I'm really looking forward to those opportunities that we can do great things together. And I am going to pass it along to Joanna.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. I have, I guess, three kind of overarching big wishes for our new school year and that's around health, hope, and joy. Health, I'm hoping that all of our students and staff and the community at large remain healthy and that together we can eradicate this pandemic which has gone on far too long. Hope that this is a really great, great school year for all of our students, whether they're in person or online, that it brings, brings back some of that normal routine, brings them back into learning and being with their classmates and teachers, whether that's in person or online, but having that connection and that they can finish it out and be successful and have a lot of great learnings. And joy that, you know, we all, we have a new director, we've got new staff. And as this is our last year in our term, we are wrapping up some loose ends and we're tackling some really creative projects like Reimagine Forward and of course, supporting our student trustees. So there's a lot of joy in that work and I hope that all of us will continue to be inspired and joyful to do that and continue that great work. Thank you.
And over to Tanya.
Well, hello everyone. And I did a quick change of ruse so I can get into uniform, which slides right into what I wanted to have as a wish for this year. And that was for us as a board to continue to work collaboratively. So we're off to a good start with our orange shirts today. Yeah, so I think my wishes are to, for us to continue to work collaboratively, to also lead by example and not be afraid to make difficult decisions. I also hope we can continue to keep our students in mind with every decision we make, that they're, they are our number one priority. And then I'm going to make a fourth wish and I'm going to put on my trustee hat and my parent hat. And that is, I really hope we can keep all our schools open throughout the year. So trustee finger, mama finger. And I will pass it on to, I'm not sure. Marco, did you have a turn yet? Okay, off to Marco.
Hello, everyone. Let's see, glad to be here, as everyone is. I have a couple of, I guess, wishes or hopes for the future. One of my things, we continue to build on the positive. I think instead of looking for weaknesses, to look at where we're strong and continue to build and get stronger. And then I think my other wish, which is kind of a triple threat, is to keep open minds and open, open, open minds, open ears and open hearts so that we're listening to the community, listening to the students and making sure that we are doing not always necessarily what we think is right, but what the general we thinks is right. And I think Tracy, are we already back to you or did we miss somebody?
Vandy.
Oh, Vandy. I don't see Vandy. Vandy, your turn.
Sure, yeah. Thanks, Marco. I think I agree with what everyone said. Overall, I think all students are hoping for a better year, more opportunities to get involved, school events. And I think that's already started, so we're already off to a great start. In terms of the Student Senate, I think last year we were a bit in survival mode. We wanted to know how students were doing with the new models. And so I think this year we want to focus on some new initiatives and move away from just focusing on COVID and how sad everyone is. And also just like on a personal note, I guess, related to committee of the whole, I want to be a little more involved with committee of the whole and come to the meetings and see what's on the agenda and share some student voice. But yeah, I think, I also like how Marco put it, the open ears, eyes, hearts, everything. I think that's a great strategy and minds, right? That's a great strategy always.
Thank you. And so just to wrap up that part, my hope is that we bottle and keep these feelings of positive collaboration, openness as we move forward to the rest of the year. It's a marathon, not a sprint. So if we can keep those things in mind, heart, action as we go, that'll be awesome. So thanks for sharing and I want to recognize and welcome director Ennis to, this is the first, yeah, first committee of the whole. And so I should have said welcome Curtis because at these committee of the whole meetings, we are less formal and often get into kind of the deeper nitty gritty of some of the topics. Also want to welcome David, Michelle, Jewel, Gail, Fred, Lorraine, and Roxanna and Kevin to the meeting. And we are live streaming, everyone. And Andrea, did I miss somebody?
Did you say Gail?
I think so. If not, Gail, welcome. Okay, so we have no private session for the evening and so we'll move on to item 1.3, which is acknowledgement of traditional lands. And I'll turn it over to trustee Reynolds. Leah, also known as Leah.
Thank you. Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Ottawa Burn, the Haudenosaunee and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions, land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that worked before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We'd like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you very much. And we will go to item 1.4, approval of the agenda. So we do have quite a bunch of items on here. I guess it's reflective of, it's our first meeting in a while and there's just a lot going on. Does anybody have any additional topics that they want to make note of at this time? We do have the other business kind of catch-all if something comes up during the meeting. So seeing no hands, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the agenda as circulated? Okay, thanks. Thanks, Tanya. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? How about, oh, good, good, good. Okay, thanks very much. That carries unanimously. So we'll move on to the, thanks Jean, consent agenda. We have only the one item, that's the minutes committee of the whole from June 9th, a lifetime ago fully. Who would like to make a motion to receive those? Okay, thanks, Marco. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any errors or omissions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, Super, thanks very much. And that carries unanimously. Okay, so we will move into our presentation items. We have 3.1 feasibility study equity of transportation services in Halton Hills. There is an associated file in the folder that hopefully people have got a chance to look at and we have up to 30 minutes for this item. Over to you, Jean.
Thank you very much. Folks, tonight I don't plan to spend 30 minutes. I really plan to give you a report as a follow-up to a conversation that I had last week with superintendent of business Roxanna Nagoy and director Ennis and associate director Bog and superintendent Podre Berwick. We had a chance to speak last Thursday and I talked to them about maybe a little bit of the background and why maybe it, we might want to look at the transportation in Halton Hills. Simply, the first two pages of this three-page report is just the background. It talks to the population of each of the four distinct regions within Halton. It talks to the current system of public transportation in three of the four areas, Halton Hills not having public transportation. It talks to the fact that each of the regions have subsidy passes for low income and it talks to some of the school supports that are in place currently in three of the four areas. When I talked to everyone last week, I talked about the Halton Hills experience in the fact that one of the largest concerns that happens every year at this time is it's all about transportation eligibility. And a lot of that concern emanates out of Georgetown South, which if you're at all familiar with Georgetown, there's, there's proper Georgetown and then there's what they call Hungry Hollow between Georgetown and Georgetown South. Some students in Georgetown South qualify for busing, but not all. Some students qualify for busing in Georgetown South to the Catholic School Board and not to the public and some qualify to the public and not the Catholic and some just don't qualify, though they're very, very, most often, very, very close to the 3.2 limit. When it comes to be such a concern about the lack of transportation, we look at the loss of students and we look at those that might be lost because they're not getting transportation. We look to the difficulty in maintaining relationships with the community when hard fast rules like 3.2 kilometers exist. And we look to also that some parents have asked for solutions based approach. For example, if their child is ineligible, could they pay for their child to get on the bus? So we had a really great discussion last week and I was able to glean a lot of information from Roxanna, primarily with her being on the HSTS and all of her experiences having to do with transportation. And what we came up with was a discussion about could we, in fact, a study be performed? Certainly right now is not a good ask time of anything for the HSTS, partly because of just starting up the school year, partly because of the shortage of bus drivers to cover all routes. There's lots of reasons not to ask at this time, but some of what came out of our discussion, and I'm now looking at the very last paragraph, and I look to the folks on tonight, director Ennis, associate director Bog, and I believe Roxanne is also on. I looked to them to correct me if I'm wrong, but in my summary of notes of our conversation, it was, could there be a lobby with the town to review the transportation? I learned that HSTS receives a high ranking and gets additional funding around 1.7 million due to its efficiency rating and, and so therefore it's precarious to add additional students on transportation. So that was a consideration. It was also noted that there could be changes to the distance currently being used to mandate, due to the mandate to reduce spending by the provincial government. So whereas 3.2 looks like a long way, get ready, folks, for a ride. It may increase, we don't know. Could we explore with HSTS and planning to determine some of the data that would be required? And I think some of the data was in the section above focusing on Georgetown South. How many students are we losing? How many currently don't qualify for transportation? Maybe it's very few in, in the South, I don't know. What would it cost to transport these students? Determine why there is such a loss. 20% at one school and 22% at the other school in Georgetown South seems like a big loss of students. What are their reasons for leaving? Is it transportation related? Is it program related? Is it reputational related? Or are they just plain and simply moving out of the area? I don't know. And could we look at the possibility, a solutions-based possibility of parents paying a fee to have their students add it to the bus? So it's a large ask. It certainly steps out the bounds of the standardized qualifier of 3.2 kilometers, but in, in the, in the idea of equity, is it something that we could look at? Could we look at maybe not so hard and set fast rules for a part of our region that has no access to public transportation? So in providing you with an outline of what we discussed and maybe next steps, I would leave it there should you have any questions or if director Ennis or associate director Bog or superintendent Nagoy would like to add anything at this time, that would also be great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Curtis.
Thank you so much trustee Gray. And through the chair, we had a meeting after our meeting with you, Jean, just to follow up and look at what staff can do. And I know one of the challenge that we, we grappled with was, you know, what role does the board play in subsidizing or supplementing public transportation in regions that don't have or are not committed or don't see the need for public transportation? With that in mind, we still are mindful of our students and how they may struggle to get to school in particular regions. So I know that superintendent Nagoy, Roxanna, you have done some follow-up with us even further to the meeting and so I'm going to ask you to give that update now.
Thank you very much. And we just, we've had a meeting with the HSTS after discussing the concerns from trustee Gray. And we've gone through a bit of history, a bit of going back in time to 2001, 2002. So we're looking, I can't believe this is 20 years ago, but we've looked back at some of the history and I've learned that there had been a partnership between Tyler Transportation, which right now we've switched to for student, however, Angela Tyler, their owner, is now the manager at for student Georgetown. So Tyler Transportation at the time had partnered up with the town and provided for a fare, an additional bus for students in Georgetown. And that was outside of the realm of the board, which is not our mandate to subsidize public transit, but would be happy to explore that option if that's a direction that the trustees would give us to see whether for student Georgetown and the town would like to maybe rekindle that. I understand that was available to students for a while, a couple of years, and then it was discontinued because of low ridership. The biggest challenge we had this year and last year is not being able to provide courtesy seats. And we're looking very hard at that option to make sure and really determine if we can safely provide courtesy seats this year. The biggest challenge we've had last year, our mandate was half the bus, for example, for some distancing. Then we've looked at, well, you have the seating plans and there, you know, we couldn't load the buses to the capacity. So this year with a bit more information and flexibility, we want to see what is the ridership on the buses and do we actually have seats available for courtesy seats? That would solve some challenges, not only in Georgetown, but across the region from parents that, I receive a number of them, parents that are very close to that eligibility criteria, right under and they don't have a bus, which in the past they did. So we have a few options. The, the team is very keen at looking at some of this data. And they will, they will need a little bit of time, as trustee Gray mentioned, maybe we're looking at November, just to provide time for the start of the school year. October is when we'll look at courtesy seats and then in November to have a bit of a data analysis around students and eligibility around Georgetown. What we are considering right now, so these two options between courtesy seats and between rekindling the discussion of that collaboration between the town and the student transportation on the possibility of adding a bus for a fare, which is something that I thought I've heard, that trustee Gray has heard from the community, might be some feasible options that could provide some solutions for the community in Georgetown.
Thank you. Is it okay, Jean, to move to questions? Yeah? Do you want to do that or do you want me to?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I see it was Amy and then Donna.
Thank you. I had heard that we weren't offering courtesy seats this year. So I'm a little bit puzzled when I heard you say that you would be looking at courtesy seats.
You are correct, trustee Colar. We are not offering them at the moment. We said this year different than last year, we'll revisit the decision in October if it's safe to be able to provide them. So I, I don't know whether that's possible. Right now we want to stabilize the driver shortage, to get a number on who actually rides the bus. And we've been asking our parents to opt out if they don't plan to use the bus and they are eligible. So we know who's there and who's not. We're still responsible for tracing, contact tracing, and we're responsible for assigning a seat to a student. So we cannot have students fluctuating and there, which we would usually do, we would load the bus of 48 seats with 60, 70 students because they're not all taking the bus all at the same time. We had enough space for them. But now we can only have 48 names attached to a bus. That's where the challenge is with courtesy seats. If we are able to do courtesy seats safely, we would do that for the entire region, not just one area. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you for that.
Donna and then Marco.
You're on mute, Donna.
I'm frozen.
My husband prefers it that way, got to be honest. A few things came out of the Ontario Public School Board Association Board of Directors meeting this weekend, one of which was, I believe if I understand it correctly, the ministry is looking at boards that have not done their ENE review, efficiency and, can't remember what the other E is, in transportation in the past few years. So through you Tracy, to Roxanna, I'm wondering, are we on the list to have that review done or have we had it done recently? And my second question around the Student Transportation Advisory Group and the consultation that the ministry is doing in Student Transportation Review and the Technical Committee on Reference Standards, if there's any way we can kind of tie into that for funding for a unique area like this? tie into that for funding for a unique area like this.
Thank you. And through you, Vice General Harrison. I've been assigned to, actually to the Transportation Provincial Committee, so I will be got myself a seat. So I'll be on that study. There are 12 school boards. We are now one of them. So 12 consortiums, I should say, that are being asked to provide data. Right now, in terms of looking at who has not had an efficiency study, they are looking at those boards, but none of the boards that have a high ranking. So we're not being reviewed from that perspective. Having said that, it is expected for us to have that funding. And just looking at the report, I wanted to just clarify, 1.7 was our we are overspending that envelope. About 800,000 is what we receive in top up for efficiency, high efficiency money. They have, for the current year, they're not looking, they don't know whether they're going to provide it again. So they've been holding that one back. We have been receiving it for the last few years. And because now they're looking at the funding formula and Trustee Gray mentioned that the review of the funding formula is in particularly looking for those efficiencies. And it is looking at whether or not there could be the funding format could be linked to eligibility distances that will have some sort of criteria that will differ a little bit depending on the geography, depending on local needs. But for an urban board like ours, my concern is that they will be higher, not lower, which means we'll lose funding or and at that point in time, we'll have to make a decision whether 3.2 is the distance for secondary schools, for example. Or is it 3.6? Or are we going back to 4.2, which is the distance that was probably 20 years ago when we were looking at that alternative options for Georgetown. So we've actually been able to decrease that distance for secondary students to 3.2. We're hoping to keep it, but I just don't know what the result will be. It's just, it's supposed to be a more efficient way for transportation, which doesn't usually mean additional funding. And then to your question in terms of additional funding coming out of that for local needs, other than embedded in local instances such as northern rural distance schools, for example, which would get some supplemental assistance for transportation. I don't expect it will make up for public transit because public transit is based on taxation at the municipal level. They have control over that. So it's outside of the realm of the provincial budget. So I wouldn't expect this would be addressed through that study.
Thank you for a full answer. I appreciate it.
Marco, go ahead.
Mine, I'm not gonna say, I'll do it again. Have we talked to the Catholic schools about this as well, Jean? So because you talk about the two high schools in Georgetown, Georgetown District High School and Christ of King. Would there be an opportunity for if we are looking at moving forward, collaborating with the Catholic Board as well as we share? I've heard many times about efficiency savings in working with our co-terminus board. So I'm just checking if we've looked into those options as well.
To the best of my knowledge, we do already share buses and everything out of the Halton Hills area with the Catholic Co-Terminus Board. In fact, 80% of all bus runs are shared with the Co-Terminus Board. Turn it over to Roxanna if you've got a view on that.
Absolutely. We already share routes across all the regions, so all the municipalities. If the question is, have we discussed whether an exemption will be provided, additional buses will be provided? No, we have not. Not since that 20 years ago. I know the two boards have discussed, there were delegations of the Catholic Board at the time. There was delegation, I think, from Ethel Gardens to the Public Board. I don't have those records. So at that point in time, there were some requests and my understanding that the result of that was the State Fair alternative, which the school bus operator was compensated by the town, which the town provides that public transit. So it was a way for the town to provide affordable public transit to students during critical hours.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up at this time. So we'll just turn it back to Jean to wrap up. Except for you need to put your mic on.
Yeah, thank you. Roxanna, thank you for the correction on the report. I have gone into the trustees folder and changed that to read the 800,000 as a top up and the 1.7 million overage. Just a quick question on that 1.7 million, is that our tab or is that the the entire tab for the H S T S being over?
That was our share. Now, some of that was due to inefficiencies as a result of midday transportation and other things that were not covered by the ministry. So we'll have another look to see where we land in the current year. But we are over the transportation envelope and that's our share.
Okay, thank you. And I just point to the trustees in that report, you can see how it's a very different look from one area to the other. But in particular, it's interesting, the idea that Roxanna has pointed out as being a historical factor actually exists in Milton right now in not that they have not that the board has connected with them, but Milton runs special school runs into the four secondary schools daily. And I think that that's a nice step there. And just my last point would be what Roxanna has talked about is must be a real historical thing. Not in my eight years did I know of such a an arrangement. But I can say that maybe if there was an arrangement and it dropped off, maybe it migrated to what is currently existing in Halton Hills. And that is where students can get a ride in a taxi at 40% off the regular taxi fare. So just as an example, I called up a taxi company today to find out what my fare would be if I rode from my house here in Georgetown. And I don't qualify whether I go to the Catholic School Board or to the Halton School, Public School Board, but I asked them what it would cost and it would cost $12. So if you reduce that by the 40%, it comes in just about $8 for a one-way trip, which is vastly different than, as you can see in the chart, the others. So just to give you an idea, it's not a very affordable solution at this time. I want to thank everybody for your attention. I did not expect that we would spend so much time, but thank you for your great questions tonight. And I look forward to the work that Roxanna has outlined as we move forward on this sort of journey of discovery in terms of the transportation and the study that might be done in the future. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jean, for spearheading that. And Roxanna, may I just to close it off? Roxanna, did you say you would be bringing something back in November or I just want to put it back on the agenda in my agenda tool so we don't lose sight of it? It's November or December? What do you think?
Whichever meeting makes more sense, let us know and we'll prepare something for that meeting. Either one works.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. So we'll move on to item 3.2, which is the Long Term Accommodation Plan Introduction. So over to you, Fred. And in the agenda, there were two links. One was to the Long Term Accommodation Plan itself, and the other one was to the presentation that Fred and team are going to go through. So over to you.
Thanks, Tracy. And yeah, just another point, the link to the LTAP piece was a link to the folder set that we had provided back in June. So you can go look and find all of the LTAP, the board report, the presentation, among other things, as part of that link as well. So that's accessible for you to access whenever you want. The other thing too is at the end of the meeting, as we go through it, just think about whether you're going to want a printed copy for this. And we'll just take a quick tally afterwards just to see who needs printed at the end of approval and if, who's okay with digital versus not. If you prefer, we could also just do it via email as well. So as long as I get a full tally of everybody who needs printed, who doesn't, then we'll get that going ASAP. So with that, without further ado, what I'd like to do tonight is just provide a little bit of a presentation as to what is in the LTAP, both in enrollment projects and what have you. And then what I really want to focus on is questions from you and to have a broader discussion as to what's going into the LTAP and what we can expect and you know, what we foresee for the future in the next 10 years. And before starting to, I would be remiss to not introduce two of my colleagues. We have Loreen Choi, which deals with the projections and the long-term accommodations for Oakville and Halton Hills. And we have Michelle Daguerre, which deals with the Milton and Burlington areas. So I just again want to thank Michelle and Loreen for their hard work in this project, as well as Mitch Gundy, which is in here tonight for assisting in collating all of this information together and getting everything up and running for, to present to you, the Board of Trustees. All right. So with that, our game plan is we presented this last Wednesday for information. We went out to the community last Friday to present this to them. Already, we've got about 270 responses with regards to the LTAP. So we're excited to review that feedback and share that. And that will close on October 6th. We provide another social media post this Monday as well, just to remind that it's out there for review and it's ready to go. So tonight, again, like I said, we'll present some of the major things around the LTAP and then go into some discussion. With regards to what we do for the LTAP on an annual basis is that we always do an updated 10-year projection. We review the projects that we've undertaken, being bound reviews, capital priorities submission, capital priorities, construction, renewal and things like that. And we identify any actions that may be required to address accommodation issues within our jurisdiction. New to this year, like we discussed last week at the board, is we're always looking to improve and try to find new ways to re-envision, add, remove at times elements of the LTAP so that it's more accessible to the community as well as those that want to read it, our target audience. So really, it's the same updates as we usually done in terms of updating where we're at with capital priorities, where the construction projects are at, how we're doing with our boundary review processes and other accommodation processes. New elements that we've introduced this year include an executive summary, which is kind of a transference of the board report, which we're looking to reduce in size and have it directly into the LTAP for public consumption. We've got project summaries upfront, which look at projects that we're anticipating within the immediate, medium, long term, and also to be determined terms, just so we can have a full breadth of view of what we're looking to do in that next 10-year period. We've also introduced the concept of capital feasibility studies. So those are projects that we're looking to identify as something that requires further study to see what the feasibility is for a project that might not just be a regular greenfield development, new school, something that may require an assessment of what the existing facilities look like, the cost, what the project looks like. So that when we do submit to the ministry, we make sure that the project is is presented in such a way that when we receive the funding, it's the funding that we need for the project that we want to do. So those are new things that we want to introduce, especially as we're more tied into facility services as well, planning that is. We provided ERA and SRA summaries for each area that can be read. So it's more of a text. And we've added the section with regards to the land acquisition process, how we do it. So that explains whether it's a typical acquisition or if it's an expropriation or what have you, and all the different iterations. So our community can know how that works. In terms of capital plan projects, last year, we completed the Dr. David R. Williams, which opened, and Nelson was substantially completed at the end of the summer. So that's good. In terms of projects that are in progress, we have three Milton schools that are currently underway. We're hoping Milton 11 is opening for September. And then Milton 12 is opening for hopefully mid-year, depending on how we do with our tendering process. And Elsie McGill is tentatively opening for mid-year this year. And right now, as you all know, we're housing them temporarily at EC Drury for the time being. And last but not least, we still have Oakville Northeast Number One, which is funded. We have identified our site and we're now moving through the process of getting that site ready for its development. In terms of boundary reviews, we had a number of them that were ongoing and being implemented last year. We had the completion of the Act in Bound Review. The Elsie McGill has been completed in the fall as well as the Oakville to be determined area, which was the holding area for Oakville 3 that we have to find a home for in wait for Oakville 3 to come. And we also completed our our first virtual boundary review being for Milton 11 and Milton 12, which was completed last June. You may recall too, last year, we submitted in two rounds of capital priorities. We submitted the Capital Priorities Grant, which was for new school projects combined with with daycare projects. So we submitted a total of six projects of which I won't go through the list, but new growth project as well as addition projects that were contemplated for the ministry, still awaiting an announcement. We're hoping fall. But fall extends from what I hear to December. So we'll see. Hopefully sooner rather than later so we can get going on these projects. We also submitted in January of last year, in early years, a capital priority as well, which was for Mackenzie Smith then, and we're still awaiting that announcement, which we assume is going to be part of the overall announcement. In terms of the overall enrollment picture that we're seeing in for current year 2020, as well as what we're projecting in the future, we're still over 100% utilization board-wide, which is good because we still meet the eligibility criteria trigger for EDCs, which gives us a lot of autonomy in acquiring and identifying the sites that we need and funding them, which is most important. We're anticipating that in the next 10-year period, we are going to drop down our utilization between that 100%, namely in the elementary panels. We're going to have to monitor that and see what that means for us. But we still have the ability to trigger both on the secondary panel. And I do presume we're still going to have a deficit in our EDC backgrounds or in our EDC reserve, which continues our eligibility. Overall, between that time too, what changes is although we're increasing in students, we're also increasing our number of pupil places that we're adding. So a number of schools are contemplated in this projection. We have the three new Milton elementary schools. We have two new elementary schools in Oakville. The two new secondary schools in both Oakville and Milton as well that are being added. So all of that together with the increase in enrollment, we're building a little bit more than we need. So that means our aging areas are starting to see a little bit more empty pupil places. So that's something we're going to have to be addressing in coming years through different strategies. In terms of elementary projections board-wide, so right now, as of this year, we're at a 97% utilization. So already we have a surplus pupil places in our stock. And by, in 10 years, we're going to be increasing that overall surplus by 1,774 pupil places. So that's essentially the equivalent of three of our standard schools right now. So one thing to note as well in this is that we still have some development to be adding to this. So a lot of it is high density. Some of it is greenfield development, which we're still not far enough in the process to understand exactly when that is going to happen. So that hopefully will counterbalance some of that underutilization. But at this time, we're not sure. So we're going to continue monitoring that. The other thing too, that was a little bit of a difference in trending is the impacts that COVID had on our enrollment. Last year, we saw quite a hit in terms of our JK, SK enrollment, as well as enrollment throughout the entire panel from grade or JK all the way to grade 12. We're still assessing how that impacts. And this did have a part to play in our long-term projections. So year over year, as we see of how long that impact is going to persist, may also alter what our total utilization picture looks like in the next 10 years. Same thing for secondary. However, in here, we're still over 100% utilization. So that means that we're still quite healthy there. We do still project that in the next 10 years, we're still going to have a deficit of pupil places. But I do want to I do want to warn on that side of things. That's still based on the previous classroom loading of 21 to 1. So once that increases to 23 to 1, that means that our overall pupil accommodation stock has increased. We have a lot more pupil places. So that may mean that our utilization may dip quite a bit. So we need to continue monitoring that. Because we may get in a situation where we may drop below 100% because of that change in loading at school. So it hasn't happened yet in terms of how the ministry views accommodations in the light of EDCs and in the light of how we track the size of our schools. But it's already been operationalized in terms of how we do our staffing. So it's to come and it'll probably be sooner rather than later. So we got to keep that in mind. Now, moving into the specific municipal pictures and what we're seeing, both at the elementary and the secondary panel. In Burlington specifically, right now, we're already underutilized. So we have an 85% utilization Burlington, leading to about 2,100 surplus pupil places. And that's projected to further increase over the next 10 years as these surplus pupil places. And that's projected to further increase over the next 10 years as the, these neighborhoods continue to age and decline in enrollment. There's not a lot of greenfield development left. Really, the last bastion of it's just north of Dundas and the Evergreen community. So all of that's gonna be counter, the, the remaining development really in Burlington is gonna be infill development as well as intensification. So higher up in density, nope. And this applies to the entire region. So I, I won't go through it for all the municipalities. Historically, high-density development has not yielded a lot of students for us. But the way things are moving, housing affordability, you know, the move from more urban areas into, into the outer line, GTA areas, may shift that. So we'll continue to monitor it and hopefully that will counter that decline where we'll start seeing a little bit more regeneration in some of these neighborhoods that are targeted for high-density development. So more to be, more to be seen on that in all, in all four municipalities. In terms of secondary, as of this year, we're at 99%, point probably 999. There's only 43 available spaces throughout. So the results of the PAR was good in terms of reducing that overage of stock in Burlington. So now we're at a healthy level. In 10 years, we're gonna increase that, that surplus to about 573, but it's still a healthy area to be in. So I'd say that, you know, over the next 10 years, we're still looking rather good. And again, we'll have to see what the impacts are for future intensification within the area. In terms of projects that we're providing in, in Burlington, maybe this is the first time we present this table here. This table is slightly different than what was presented in the board report in that we're, we're gonna focus tonight mostly on the immediate, medium-term and under-review projects, less so on the long-term projects. Those are more ones that are six years out and more. But we can definitely discuss them tonight if those are part of your questions. So I, I don't want to stop you from asking those. But for Burlington specifically, the more immediate projects that we have in terms of accommodations are, we want to do a boundary review for Florence Mears. Right now, that school is directing its grade one students to two separate FI school being Charles R. Baldwin and in Clarksdale. So we want to see if we want to unify that cohort. So they're going to the same school at the end. So we'll, we'll be proposing to review that. In terms of medium, in terms of medium-term projects that we would be exploring in ERAs 108 and 109, which is the Alton area in the northeast. Milcroft, Michelle, or Orchard? East of the Walkers. I think, oh, sorry, the Orchard area. We're gonna be looking to see if we can rebalance enrollment with the, the introduction of the Evergreen Development Area. So that's something we're looking to do. The big one that we're not sure as to what the timing is gonna be is Burlington Central JK to 12 facility. So that's one, like we talked about earlier, these capital feasibility projects or studies. We want to see if there's an opportunity to do a partial tear down or full tear down rebuild of the entire facility to build a more up-to-date school for JK to 12. That's, that meets our accessibility needs, that meets our accommodation needs, that removes the FCI backlog that are, that is at both of those schools. And see if there's something that we can work out and submit that as a future capital priorities project, similar to what we did for MM Robinson, as well as, as Nelson. So something in the same vein as that. And then the last one is the ERAs 101 and 102. That's South Burlington area, which we're looking to try to rebalance enrollment to. Because we have schools that are overutilized versus schools that are underutilized and see if we can better distribute our, our, our portable needs in that area and have kids in bricks and mortars. With regards to Oakville, a little bit of a different picture.
Go ahead, Leah.
Thank you, through the vice chair. What is the, what is the acceptable rate of time in which the ministry or our board uses to determine if a community's gone through a boundary review, how much time would you let pass if the solution isn't completed? And you're gonna do an under-boundary review. And I speak specifically about this Burlington ERA 102, which had undergone a boundary review, I think in 2018, 2019. And I'm just wondering, what is the timeline? Is there some parameters provided by the ministry or our, that our board, you know, observes?
Sorry, I was gonna get formal there. In terms of that, I, ministry directive, boundary review specifically, I don't believe so. I know that the ministry does provide for some limitations through the pupil accommodation review guidelines for pars, like a limitation of five years. So if one was involved five years after the fact, I don't believe there is one for boundary reviews. You know, as a good example, things that happen in high-growth areas where we're doing boundary reviews almost every year. I, I don't think that that's something that we put a limitation on. However, all that being said, albeit there's not a rule in place or I'll, I'll have to double-check the policy just to be 100% sure. That's not to say that that's not a consideration when we are introducing the idea of a new boundary review. We want to be sensitive to that fact that if a school has undergone multiple boundary reviews, that we're not constantly hitting the same community and we're letting things settle out as well. So that, that might be a good example here. Where it's TBD because we still need to see how trends shake out in this area after resulting from boundary reviews. And if the, the problem persists, then I think we just have to review it or look at alternate options or reopen it and look at what exactly the, the scope of the project is. Because that may have changed based on what the, the other boundary review might have been about. This one might be about a completely different other subject matter. So i- it's hard to give a definitive answer, but it's looked at on a case-by-case.
Yeah, mine's kind of following on a little bit from Leah's, but I'm just trying to remember when it is that the recent boundary review that Leah spoke of is fully complete. If I don't think it's, like last year was the first year that the younger kids switched from TAC to Ryerson, but I, there was still those kids. I see Michelle looking up on a chart, so I'm thinking she's gonna tell me the answer. Like I'm just trying to figure out when it, when that actual boundary review is in full effect and how long, once we've had all those pieces in place, you know, you're saying about settling time. Well, if we're not even at the end of the impact, we haven't come close to settling yet.
And while Michelle's looking at, and that's why these are in TBD areas, these are ones that are, they remain in our radar. So the discussion we had last week with regards to legacy boundary reviews, I think, although this one doesn't have as much of a legacy, I'm gathering, because it's a recent one, it's something that if we're not seeing the results or the, we're not seeing that accommodation issue being addressed, that we're gonna have to keep an eye on it. So those are ones to continue monitoring over time. It doesn't mean that they're happening this year or next year. It might be a couple of years out, but they're ones that there still remain an accommodation issue that we need to solve. So our projections still show that there's over and underutilization.
So we're in second year of implementation right now. And I believe we have, let's see, another three years for fully, for full implementation.
So that falls into that long-term TBD area. So it's, it's way out, but it's in that 10-year horizon.
Okay, just being mindful of time. There are no other hands up. So go for it.
All right. So for Oakville Elementary, again, we're seeing increases in, in, in enrollment that's occurring, namely because of the North Oakville area. But there's also a significant amount of intensification areas also identified throughout Oakville. So those are some of those high-density areas we were discussing earlier. We're still foreseeing a deficit of pupil places in the next 10 years as well, 10 years as well. So that further supports the need for the, the additional schools that we have planned for the area. Namely, we have Oakville Three, Five, which were part of the last submission that we did to the capital priorities submission, as well as Oakville Number Four, all three of them in the North Oakville area. In terms of the secondary projections, again, we're quite healthy as it is now. We have a deficit of 1,280 pupil places. Most of that is going to be as part of what's happening south of Dundas, but there are growing pressures that are occurring north of Dundas, which are eventually gonna be directed to the new school. But we, we'll talk about this soon is what's the interim solution? And so that new school is available. And over the next 10 years too, we continue to see that there is going to be a deficit in pupil places occurring within the town of Oakville as a whole, and how we're gonna accommodate that. We do have another secondary school contemplated in North Oakville area, but we're still trying to determine whether or not that will actually be in need. Because so far, it doesn't appear that it's, we're gonna hit that critical mass, but something we'll continue monitoring. So in terms of immediate needs in, in Oakville, we have two projects that were submitted to the capital priorities process last year, being Oakville Number Three and Post Corrs, which was a, an FDK addition, conversion and addition. And then two, or boundary reviews that we're proposing within the Oakville area. First and foremost, it's a temporary accommodation solution that we need to look at for where we're gonna be directing secondary students being generated from North Oakville as White Oak Secondary School begins to reach its max capacity. So what are we gonna do with those students, given the delay in opening for the new high school? And another one that we may review as well is ERAs 116 and 117. So south of Dundas, north of Huey, east of 16 Mile, all the way to the border of Oakville. There's some opportunities there to rebalance enrollment after we open the new Oakville Number Three school, which is, a lot of those schools are holding that population. So we may just open that up too and see if there's any opportunities to rebalance there. In terms of medium-term projects, we've got, again, the two other elementary schools contemplated in North Oakville, as well as the secondary school. And future, or future projects are the second high school, as well as the Brownie Green Development School that's identified. We're still unsure as to when and if there's a need for those two facilities. Milton, similar picture, significant enrollment pressures and growth in the elementary panel. So we're continuing to have a deficit of pupil places, which will be counteracted by the addition of the, the, the two schools that are currently looking, or Milton 11, that's under construction, 12, that soon to be. And we also have an additional planned school that'd be Hilton 13 to accommodate for this. Do note that we have a number of additional schools that are identified in the Phase Four lands. So specifically, the Trafalgar and Britannia Secondary Plan areas, which we're gonna be introducing a number of new elementary and secondary schools as well. We're still not sure when that starts, but those numbers will be, Trafalgar numbers are in here, but the Britannia ones are yet to be added. So we'll continue to monitor that. Secondary projections in Milton, again, very similarly, we're overutilized and projected to continue to be overutilized. So we have Elson McGill that's gonna be opening this year. And then we have two other planned secondary schools, one in Trafalgar and one in Britannia. Anticipated timing to be determined once those, the development applications start coming in. But they will be in the next five to 15-year period that we can anticipate those pressures to come. In terms of immediate needs, one of the boundary reviews we're contemplating for this year is a realignment of some of the FI boundaries at the border of Oakville and Milton. Right now, students that are currently attending the English program at Sam Sherrett, a portion of that rural area is actually being directed south to Sunnydale. And then it's associated secondary school. So what we'd like to do is see if we can change that so that it aligns the municipal boundaries and it aligns with the secondary school families, their family feeder schools. Otherwise, we have the Milton District High School addition and renewal project that we submitted to the ministry. Medium-term, we have Milton 13, which we also submitted to the ministry. And two other boundary reviews that we have yet to determine a timeline around are the Martin Street Bruce Trail, as well as NJ MacArthur and Tiger Jeet Singh schools. There's a number of little pockets right now of those that are being held in other schools away from their immediate neighborhood. And once we see the opening of Milton 11 and 12 and some stabilization of enrollment, these could be opportunities to redirect these families back to their, their more immediate neighborhood. Last but certainly not least is Halton Hills. In this case here, we have a significant amount of underutilization at the elementary panel, about almost 1,300 students. And even with the growth that's gonna come on with Vision Georgetown, we still anticipate there to be about 830 surplus pupil places. We recently bought the Georgetown Number Three Public School Site in Southeast Georgetown. And we also have Vision Georgetown, which we've identified three new elementary schools and one new secondary school. That plan is currently in front of the Ontario Land Tribunal, formerly the LPAT, formerly before that, the OMB. And one of the main concerns we have in planning right now is how the, the funding feasibility for these schools at the Ministry of Education, when they see the underutilization of the other schools within the area. So this is an area where we're certainly gonna have to focus on in coming years as to what solutions we may have to address this, the, the, the empty pupil places that we have, similarly to what's happening in, in Burlington. Similar picture in the secondary panel as well, in, in Halton Hills, were underutilized by about 350. And that'll close the gap a little bit in, in 10 years with Vision Georgetown. However, it still complicates things as to how we can defend the addition of a new secondary school in Vision Georgetown when we have surplus pupil places. So again, we're gonna have to look at strategies as to how to better align ourselves to enable those projects to happen. So with regards to immediate and medium-term projects, we haven't identified any yet in Halton Hills. In terms of projects that are under review for timing-wise and, and implementation, we have both the Oakville Three and Vision Georgetown lands, which include three elementary and one secondary school. We also have Mackenzie Smith Bennett, which is the second capital, or feasibility study that we're looking to do. And again, that's another one where could we explore a partial or full demo rebuild, right sizing the school to what we need, accessibility issue, community use needs, all of those things. And coming up with a project that seems feasible so that we can present that to the ministry for capital priorities submission. So that's it. In terms of the summary of what's happening in our municipalities, in terms of next steps. So we have our meeting tonight. Next Wednesday, we're closing the survey portal, which will give planning time to review that feedback, consolidate it, and come back to the community as a whole to provide an overview of what the feedback was from our community. And then we'll be bringing forward the, the LTAP for approval to the Board of Trustees on the 20th of October. On that same night, we'll also bring forward our proposed boundary reviews that we'd like to do for that year, which will be approved at a, at a later meeting in November. And then once everything is approved, then we'll be circulating it to our community partners and yeah, for further review. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Loreen and Michelle are also here to assist me in anything I may not be able to answer.
Thank you. Go ahead, Andrea.
Thank you, Tracy. So I, I am very glad to see that there is some, looking at some sort of what I like to call the Frankenstein-ish kind of boundaries that have happened over the years to see if they can be sort of corrected. Looking, you know, at the Florence Mears, looking at the pockets in Milton. That, I, I think that that's really great. Thank you very much for doing that.
Okay, go ahead. Yep.
Maybe just quickly too, if we haven't hit them all, let us know. Or if there's any other ones that come along the way, just, just let us know as well. And then certainly something we can look to add or maybe further clarify. And we did catch them with what we proposed. So thank you for that.
Yes. And I just wanted to alert everybody again that legacy boundary review motion, I believe it came on to our agenda and order paper through Andrea and another Burlington trustee. So perhaps we're looking at taking that one off as being fulfilled through this process. So I would just encourage everybody to take a look at pages 12 and 13. That's where all of the boundary reviews, short, medium, and longer term are, are listed. So just to make sure that that is indeed fulfilled and we are caught up to date, that would be, that would be really great. Go ahead, Joanna.
Yeah, thanks. Through you, Vice Chair. Quick question to, to Fred, please. The table for Milton that summarizes Milton projects, the bottom two lines referring to the elementary schools, Martin Street, Bruce Trail, NJ MacArthur, Tiger Jeet Singh. Can you just clarify for me if I'm reading this correctly? So are, are there, is there an excess enrollment in those elementary schools that will necessitate either moving or not opening the school to any more new students from what otherwise would be their neighborhood? So basically redirecting some of the students that would otherwise qualify for that particular school to then have to go to another school? You're on mute.
Might be a very good thing. So what we're looking to do is with the, what's happening right now is that there's a significant amount of holding that's occurring at a lot of these schools in wait for Milton 11, Milton 12, as well as with Viola Desmond and the redirects that happened. So there, there's a lot of students being spread out all over the place. And that prevented us from being able to bring these communities back together. So a more walkable distance, something that's more immediate to their neighborhood. So what we want to do as part of those reviews is that once we see enrollment stabilize a little bit with the opening of our new facilities, is there an opportunity to bring them back into their school community? So it may result in additional portable capacity, but that might be offset by transportation. Or to your point, if, if it is creating something where we're just going to put ourselves again in the situation where it'll end up with redirects to other schools, because we've over subscribed that facility. You know, we want to avoid that as well. So that, that's why it's more in the TBD is we haven't really defined a time as to when, when the right time is. But it is something that's in, in the back of our minds, because some of these have been community requests as well as to, you know, going back to their, their, their more immediate neighborhoods. So we have some no film Milton and Burlington too. I hope that answers your question, Joanna.
Tracy Gray, Jean, and then Amy, and then we will try to wrap it up.
Thank you very much through the Vice Chair to Fred and Lauren. On slide 25, you allude to the Vision Georgetown Secondary Plan ERA 124 being adopted. That's that vision. Let's see. Yes, the Vision Georgetown, the secondary plan has been appealed to the Ontario Land Tribunal, OLT. I spoke with a counselor today to find out more about this. And in addition to this boondoggle, because the town really felt that they had everything agreed to with the developers and, and they were quite taken back, I guess, by this moving in this direction. In addition to this, water from Lake Ontario has not arrived yet into the spot where it needs to be to support this development. I think it's only got up as high as the fifth line. So just wanted to make that, that information available, because there's, there's more than just the OLT that could get in the way of this development. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Go ahead, Amy.
Thanks. Fred, I'm, I'm going to express again my concern about the diminishing number of students in ERA 103, particularly at Pine Land, which is right now a grade two to eight French immersion school. And I noted that you didn't have it on the list for a boundary review potentially, but it has declined significantly in the last year and a half. And so I'm, I'm wondering what your thoughts are, in particular for that school, considering that it is single track French immersion. What the possibilities might be in order to make it more robust. And I realize it still has a decent number of students in it and it's only serving seven grades. But if the size of the physical plant, it, it's, it's not, doesn't look very full.
That, that school can also be included in the ERA 102 boundary review. I see that being, I see that being school participating in that for sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. And I just, this doesn't require an answer right now, but as I listen to the schools and areas where it's being considered to rebuild the physical plant because of aging infrastructure and right sizing and so on, I just at some point would love some insights about where a school like T A, like Lock Falls. I don't see it listed, but enrollment is protected to continue with the find it is a stable, mature area at this point in time. The physical plant is kind of one of, one of the ones that requires a lot of attention. And I just think there's more that could be done for that school as well.
That, that's fair, Tracy. And the, the first two that we threw in there, we, we took because it was a new concept, we took kind of a stab at the, and I, I say this with all the respect, the ones with the worst FCI and probably the most suspect. But it's certainly something we can take back. I'll, I'll discuss it with the, with my colleagues in Facility Services. And I, I think there's definitely a case to be made for it as well.
Thank you. Awesome. And there are no other questions. So Michelle, Lorene and Fred, thanks very much for the improvements that were made this year, the extra bits and pieces that have gone in there. It's represents so much more work than is just shown on the paper. So thanks very much and I'll look forward to hearing at the next meeting what those 200 plus members of the community had to say, and then moving forward to consideration for approval. Okay, so the next topic then is Future Committee of the Whole Topics and Processes. And I am on deck for that. And I was wondering, Andrea, if you would be able to share your screen? Then I, I'll just pop a link in the chat box. If I can find the chat box. Okay. Does that work for you? Is that okay? Thank you. I'm a one screen wonder tonight here. So back in June, we created a jam board where we laid out the ideas and aspirations for topics that we wanted to cover in the coming year. So in that link, you'll see I, I made a copy and have taken a stab at grouping and refining. And so I'll just go over that briefly for your commentary. And then I can also tell you kind of what I've, how I've moved some of the topics onto the agendas already. So I grouped them in four different places. Firstly, content substantive content, including fair funding, equity update and bullying prevention updates. So those are things that we've done in the past. For fair funding, we have a subcommittee that's in place already. Then there was the group around governance related things, terms of reference for subcommittees, efficiency, vice chair, chair election processes. So I put a circle around those because I think they go together and are related to the work of our existing governance subcommittee. Then over to the right hand side, there was quite a lot of interest and priority around professional development and team building with new members of the senior administration team, including Curtis. So those things are together and I kind of wondered whether, you know, that is a chunk of work that could be taken on by the existing professional development subcommittee. And then lastly, there was quite a bunch of suggestions around the role of trustee, preparing an onboarding package, information package. All of this sort of working towards election time and trying to, I guess, provide some good solid information for the community to be inclusive and inviting of people who may be considering putting their names in. And I'm not sure whether that fits in the existing and existing mandate of an existing subcommittee or whether we would want to make one for that purpose. So first, a couple of questions. Firstly, is that okay how they've been grouped? Does that work? Go ahead, Amy.
Yes, the PD subcommittee can definitely take on the items that are in that one bubble. And I, I think the governance subcommittee, I'm on both of those, so I can, I can say, I think we can do those. Those look like they belong there and everything else looks like it's in the right spot. But we don't, like you said, we don't have a subcommittee for that role of the trustee piece. And I, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, excellent. And I can just then, just regarding the content piece, I paired the fair funding revisited piece along with budget timing. I paired the bullying prevention piece along with our annual discipline training, because it's the same staff. And I have tentatively placed the equity update in December, earlyish, earlyish on. So those would be requests through the director to have staff. Those last two would be requests to have staff come and do updates for us. So are there any other comments or suggestions? Go ahead, Tanya, and then Andrea.
I think the question I have pertains more to the role of trustee in that, is there anything we can leverage from OPSBA? Insofar as perhaps they have some training or material that they could share or perhaps there's standard material that goes to all trustees in Ontario? So I'm just thinking of perhaps leveraging that relationship.
I think so. And there's also lots of materials through the OESC as well that could be pulled together. I think that depending what on other perspectives is that we could strike a short term subcommittee to pull all of that stuff together. So to see what's out there, pull it together, see if there's any kind of Halton specific stuff that we need to also develop. Go ahead, Andrea.
Well, we do have a Google classroom with a bunch of resources and they do dip into those resources that were mentioned as well with OPSBA and the OESC. I wouldn't mind being part of that committee, this subcommittee. It really looks like a couple of things. It looks like, you know, the sort of onboarding package for after the election, but also a, hey, this is what it's like to be a trustee. Some upfront information for pre-election.
So are there others, given that that's really the chunk that doesn't have human resources attached to it as yet? Are there any other people that would, that would fuel your day? Anybody else want to join Andrea to tackle that, set the time limit, the timeframe and et cetera? Kelly, yep. Kelly, Andrea, Donna, Jean. You should be writing this somewhere. Kelly, Andrea, Donna, Jean. Okay, did I get everybody? So would one of you kindly take the lead on at least organizing the first meeting? And if we add it back onto the agenda next time, just so you can talk about a potential timeframe and, and maybe outline some plans, does that make sense? Go ahead, Andrea.
I said I would. I, that's just me saying I will.
Okay, excellent. And yeah, don't feel, don't feel you have to do it all. Go ahead, Donna.
I second that.
That's awesome. And so we have a plan there and for the other groups for PD and governance, I'll just pop them back onto the agenda next time. So those subcommittees can outline their, their plans for getting to end of job kind of thing. Sound good? Okay, so we have these things in our agenda tool, which I'm just going to copy and paste the link for everybody. Because additional items will come up that are time sensitive, that we need to build in, you know, month to month as they arise. But we have kind of a nice framework of things that we're working towards throughout this school year, which will be great. So is there any other questions or comments on that topic? Awesome. So I hope you can see how we kind of took our ideas from June, packaged them up and next step is to create a plan through those subcommittees to accomplish. And it's 7:26, we have caught right up. So I wonder if we can take a five minute stretch break to grab some water or whatever the case may be and come back at 7:32 and we'll tackle the second part of the agenda. Okay, see you in five minutes. Subcommittee updates. And we have three point four point one, Reimagine Forward. Uh, and that subcommittee is Andrea, Joanna, Leah, Margot and myself. And we're just gonna provide a, a brief update. I will, uh, the link to that report is in the chat box. Uh, and so I will just start to say that the committee met with Scott last week, I believe, to go over the declaration and talk about how we can uh, most effectively and efficiency, efficiently roll that out to the system and the community. And uh, Scott has gone away and met with uh, some people in the communications department. And he has today shared some uh, preliminary ideas, uh, including how to get it out onto social media and how to share with the system, including by uh, making a, a, a video. Um, yes. So that is uh, generally where we are at. Uh, in the Build Back Better uh, document, you see uh, meeting notes from September twenty-twenty-one. And uh, we developed some steps on how to do that launch. We had quite a fulsome conversation about the timing uh, and landed on um, preparing for early in the new year, uh, given everything that's uh, happening now to start this school year uh, in a good way. Uh, we wanted to have some space to um, to do that and then to really capture people's interest and attention. Uh, we also brainstormed um, a list of both internal circulation opportunities and external circulation opportunities. Uh, so if uh, anybody has additional ideas, please uh, just pop them into the document either now or or at your leisure. So I will open it up to other uh, committee members to see what I may have missed. Or any questions that people may have. Yep, go ahead, Leah.
Um, yeah, no, nothing missed. Um, but I would, I would share, I would share with this group some of the things that you've already shared it out with. I thought that was pretty, um, that was a pretty good idea. And uh, you know, sometimes it's easier to have something to share, but you've already started the conversation. So perhaps you can sort of let people know where you've been inserting it, because it's good to be reminded.
Sure. Yep. Thanks, Leah. Thanks for the reminder. I have a note on my paper here, School Councils. Uh, and so in my mind, I've been doing a bit of a soft launch, I guess, and uh, at CAC, because we're there, uh, I was at the TA Blake Box School Council meeting the other night because I was invited. And I just really have uh, mentioned it and positioned it as trustees really trying to create a positive environment to, you know, push forwards uh, change. Um, so I would suggest if people have that opportunity for kind of soft launch, soft introduction to uh, the full idea that maybe you can uh, take it and let people know that in the new year, this is gonna be circulated kind of far, far and wide. Um, and I guess the other thing is that we may have in the coming weeks or months an opportunity to showcase this work through OPSPA. Uh, they are Above and Beyond uh, Initiative, uh, which they have a, a website and they're showcasing um, Above and Beyond Initiatives from uh, around the province. Go ahead, Heather.
Thank you. Uh, if it's okay with you, I've added uh, the Human Rights and Equity Advisory as well. And we'll, you know, we'll, uh, Kelly and I will share it.
Great. Thank you. And you know, I really need to um, keep that group at the top of my mind. It's a newer group. And uh, just need to incorporate uh, them into uh, my daily thinking. Go ahead, Joanna.
Thanks. And uh, you know, given that we have Vandy here, I just wanted to um, remind us also that we did wanna make sure that we include student voice. And that the Senate would be a great way to reach out to um, to our student body through the student senators and um, as facilitated by Vandy and Casey, um, to get um, student input into this as well. Over and out.
Wait, can I just jump in? Is that, is that fine? Okay. Um, yeah, no, I agree. Um, I think the senators would really like to um, uh, share with the committee and, and, and we're always here to provide uh, student input. So we definitely want to expand um, our involvement with all board level committees, um, but especially committee at the whole.
You're on mute, Tracy.
Okay, I just said something really, really funny and uh, intelligent there. I'll try and do it again. Um, so I just want to wrap up this topic uh, by saying that uh, in his write-up, which I'll share with everybody as well, uh, Scott, Heather and Marnie also proposed in a, a link uh, that people could click on to share their HDSB stories. So at the beginning of our discussions as a subcommittee, we talked a lot about creating an HDSB repository of these um, reimagine forward things that are going on. And we kind of talked ourselves out of it. And one of their suggestions was to include such a resource, which was almost like a, a, a dream come true uh, on that front. So um, I will share uh, Scott's document with everybody and um, look to get that uh, subcommittee back together again to um, to talk about how we can move forward on the visual identity, on the video, on other sorts of things. And we'll report back to the group uh, next month as well. Okay, so moving forward then to item three point four point two, Student Trustee Mentor Terms of Reference. That is Leah and Joanna. So over to you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, uh, Joanna and I are really pleased uh, to speak on behalf of the subcommittee. Um, but I would just um, like to um, thank the subcommittee. That was Joanna, Tanya, Margot, Donna, our student trustee, Vandy, and David Boge also um, was around the table. Uh, and anybody who is here tonight, feel free to, to pop, top, to add into the conversation. Um, Joanna and I uh, had shared with you the uh, trustee terms of reference and we had uh, us a little report written. I'm not gonna go through it with you, um, but I'll just give you the high-level pieces. Um, you, uh, we had, the reason why we're back today is because of a motion that we had uh, made in May um, to look into this. And we have a couple of outcomes um, from this uh, project. So we have for you a terms of reference that we think is really good. It involved a, a lot of input from a lot of members in the subcommittee as well as trustees out of the subcommittee. Um, and we think it's a good document to run with um, for our um, for this year. Certainly, we acknowledge that this is a, a document that can continue to be evolved. So there's no um, there's no end to make improving it. So we're happy with that. Um, the uh, second outcome, which is pretty excellent, we think, is um, in so doing the terms of reference, we identified um, a need to create a student trustee orientation um, piece. And I'll let Joanna um, talk about it uh, in depth. Um, it's, uh, have a look at it. Again, this is something that um, we actually used uh, this year already to uh, with the, with our student trustees. Um, and uh, and the third item outcome uh, from this is um, in our work of creating this terms of reference, we did have meetings with staff uh, because student trustee is an area where there's overlap in responsibility with um, staff. So we wanted to be very clear on, you know, I wanted to say um, being very clear on what is our responsibility and getting into those gray areas. Um, so for that reason, we were really pleased to um, uh, come up with uh, an orientation part one and, and a subsequent part two. Um, and I guess the, oh, and the final thing is, um, we did have a look at uh, after we completed the terms of reference, we had a high-level look at the student trustee policy to see whether there was any in, intersectionality, meaning whether there was any tasks um, that we needed to have in our terms of reference that helped or would help the student trustees undertake their jobs. So we did that. But an outcome of that was we realized um, that the student trustee policy should be uh, reviewed in its, on its own. Um, and uh, so I might just hand it over to Joanna for her remarks, um, and certainly anybody on the committee as well.
Yeah, so just uh, as a way of context, uh, you all remember being um, new to your role. Obviously, there was a lot of learning. And uh, we, we ourselves did have an orientation process at the start of our term. And so that, that's very much required for the student trustees as they begin their year. Um, also, it's important for the student trustee mentors to understand uh, what their role is and how they can support the student trustees themselves. So out of that um, came out, uh, you know, and out of the conversations we had with staff, where we were able to uh, delineate uh, the, the, the roles of the student, um, sorry, of the trustees, trustee mentors and of the staff advisors, um, where the differences lay and where the commonalities were. And how we could work and collaborate together to um, support student trustees and, and the Senate. Um, as a result, uh, with input from um, uh, Donna and uh, Margot, who are the more, more uh, recent um, student trustee mentors, we compiled a pretty um, pretty long checklist of things that we felt uh, student trustees needed to um, become uh, familiarized with. And um, as we were planning the orientation, it became clear that that's a lot of content to cover. And also, there was a bit of a blurring of responsibilities between trustees and staff. So we decided to split it out into two parts. One that focused um, strictly on um, issues related to governance. And so we kind of call that the boardroom. Um, and the timing of that was um, was great uh, because we did this prior to the very first board meeting. So I think, I'm hoping that that really helped the um, the student trustees to kind of understand how the meeting will uh, unfold. Um, what their expectations are, some of the meeting norms and that sort of thing. We were also able to cover um, high level, you know, our overarching um, principles of the multi-year plan, the commitments in there and the way forward as our guiding kind of principles in the work that we do. And always keeping that at the forefront of the work that they will be doing as well. Um, and then we followed that up with um, part two orientation, which typically um, used to fall under the um, responsibility of the director's office. But because we had done all that work, um, Leah and I were invited to facilitate um, that second part of orientation, which kind of took that, you know, all those other pieces of the checklist that were more re- related to staff advisors and the Senate. Um, and so we facilitated that, but I think the plan is that that will become the responsibility of, of the staff um, advisors to take on um, going forward. And again, I think splitting that huge learning list of things uh, into two very um, specific categories, the boardroom and kind of the beyond boardroom, I think was uh, helpful. And Vandy can certainly speak to that. Um, yeah, am I missing anything, Leah? Uh, we, we do have document, we do have that documented and that's kind of a, um, you know, an evergreen um, list or report that can, things can be added to and, and uh, tweaked. But we felt that it was a pretty comprehensive list and included links to relevant policies, reports, um, things that guide the work that we do. Sorry, Leah, go ahead.
Well, that's okay. Uh, I just got a text from Vandy. She's having some weird tech happening. So um, she says she's gonna try to come back, which is great. So I'll just fill some airspace. Um, so the outcome, and I see there's a question, um, the outcome is, we just would like you to accept our draft, uh, Student Trustee Mentor Terms of Reference, um, use it for our um, our, our next uh, I guess, committee uh, assignment piece. And the other thing um, is we would um, uh, like to uh, make a motion to review the student trustee policy. And um, in and of its own, and that's a separate um, task. Um, because we did notice um, after looking through it, that it was, it read like a governance um, procedure. Um, and we realized that we could uh, with the student trustees or, and all trustees, um, you know, make some improvements. But I guess, oh, here's Vandy coming back. So we'll maybe take the um, take the questions and then Vandy, if you want to add in too, that'd be great.
Okay, Margot and Andrea?
Hi, thanks. Um, not a, a question, but almost an add-on for you both to know about. So um, the liaise between OPSPA and AUSTA ECO is looking at creating a booklet for student trustee mentors. In terms of supervision was one of their areas of looking at and just a general terms of reference so that trustees across the province are approaching it the same way. So that they're looking at doing by December. So I will keep you updated. I just wanted to let you know.
Thanks. That's really good news.
Andrea?
Sorry, can I just follow up with Margot on that? Uh, so Margot, if there are any drafts coming out, would you be able to share them with us? Thank you.
Yeah, so we still, there's a subcommittee that's getting together. Um, Jennifer is just trying to organize it. So that should be, I know she wants to have it done by December. So we're hoping.
And I just wanted to say that uh, I think this is uh, reading over the, the um, the work that you've done. Uh, great work. Um, you know, when you put people together who have been the mentors, uh, been there, uh, seen the good, the bad, the ugly, uh, as well as uh, getting the student trustees involved right in it. Uh, I think that you, we can only uh, do better. So thanks a lot to the group.
Thanks for that feedback. Vandy, um, we'd love to hear from you on your, um, what you'd like to share, please.
For sure. Um, I'm really happy that the uh, trustee mentor terms of reference was created, um, as well as like the, I guess, the orientation checklist. I think it definitely, obviously on your end, it, it'll, it'll help with um, you know, knowing what the role entails and what you'll need to be sharing with the new student trustees. But also on our end, it, it, But also on our end, it, I think our orientation this year and just like the transition from, I guess for me, like term one to term two, but then for Casey, entering a new term, the feedback that I heard from her was that it was really smooth. And it did help kind of paint a picture of what this very unfamiliar environment is like. Because coming in during my first term, it was a little bit overwhelming, especially I think with COVID probably too. So having like an organized set of topics to discuss at the first meeting and like things to go over and all of that really helps kind of organize things as, as well as just make the role a little bit less intimidating. So really appreciate that this was created.
Thanks for that feedback. So Joanna and I have prepared a draft motion. Joanna, do you want to put it in the chat, please?
Yet resolved that a subcommittee, including the student trustees, student trustee mentors, associate director and up to two additional trustees be created to review the student trustee policy and that a report, including any recommendations, be brought back to the committee of the whole meeting in October, which is only in a couple of weeks. It's October 13th, 2021, for further discussion. Is that too soon, the 13th?
I'm starting to panic. I think the, the piece about this was, you know, part of the student trustee policy has student elections, which, you know, will come up very fast in February. So there is, there is an immediacy to this. But would love to, I see people put their hand up. I'd love to hear others' feedback.
Tanya, and just FYI, the meeting after that is November 10th. Tanya, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I do have a concern with the October 2021 date only because I know what the policy looks like. It's several pages long. And right now, it sits as a poly proc. It's a, it's a mishmash of a policy and a procedure. So if you want to go and review it, what inevitably will happen is that you'll have to create two separate documents. So you may, no, I won't even say you may, it's too tight. You may be able to present a policy by November, but I don't know if you'll be able to have a procedure in place by November. So I would rather have maybe, I'm just worried about, it's too tight of a deadline, I think. So maybe December, because that'll buy you a few more weeks. And that way, it'll still be ready in time for next year's early elections. That, that's my suggestion, but I'll leave it up to Leah and Joanna.
If I may, to the vice chair, I noticed that Vandy is weighing in on here. Vandy, do you see, because you would, your Senate hasn't been convened as yet. So I acknowledge that that's an important part of this policy is we need to give you enough time because senators haven't been selected in all the schools as yet. So really, that's only one or two meetings potentially that you would have. So I can see that this has, you know, that, you know, with our end in mind, you're right, that we need to give your, your group more time to deal with this.
If I may, yeah. So our first Senate meeting is on the 19th of October. So we wouldn't actually have a chance. I mean, if the committee of the whole meeting is on the 13th, we wouldn't have a chance to share it with the new Senate. And I don't know when the second meeting date is. Like, I don't have it in front of me. But we would at least be able to share the, the policy with the senators, like at the first meeting or, you know, give it as homework or something for them to review before the November meeting.
May I just ask a question to Vandy, please? Do you think this is something that you would want to take to your executive? Like, would this be some, or creating a subcommittee, subcommittee? Like, I would, because I think this is a really important part of our process is ensuring that your group can have the right amount of time for engagement with this.
Yeah, so what I, and that's exactly what I think we're, we're thinking of doing. Last year, we had like an elections review committee. So we'll have, you know, interested senators form a committee to, or a subcommittee to specifically focus on this policy. So this would probably consist of executive senators, some secondary senators, and if there's elementary senators that are interested, perhaps elementary senators as well.
And Casey's not here today either at our meetings. So we, we haven't had a chance to, I mean, she's received this report, but hasn't had a chance to weigh in on this, this motion. How should we proceed, folks?
What do you think about slotting in December into the motion? I mean, that doesn't stop you in any way from coming back earlier if it, if it's possible. Go ahead, Joanna.
Yeah, no, I was just going to remind Vandy that the November Senate is on the 9th. And Tracy, when is our November, November Committee of the Whole?
The 10th.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, December looks like a reasonable, reasonable timeline, I think.
Yeah, and I honestly think like we can probably have you back by the 10th. But maybe just to give us some additional room, December sounds good.
Okay, so it sounds like there is general agreement or let's test it through consensus here on the motion itself and a friendly amendment to slot in December 8th, 2021 or December 2021. Is there any other discussion on that? I don't see any. It looks like a consensus decision here. Tanya, and then I just want to ask whether you want people to volunteer right now? Because we said a couple of other trustees. Go ahead, Tanya, maybe you're volunteering.
I'm quasi-volunteering. I think because it is a policy and that falls under governance. So someone from the governance committee should be on that subcommittee. So I think as long as you have, there's four of us on the governance committee, as long as there's one of us on there, then. So that would be my recommendation, to have someone from the governance committee on this subcommittee.
Go ahead, Marco.
I am quasi-volunteering for that from Tanya because I'm on the governance committee and I also would like to be involved. Please. And I think I was before, so it's progression. Strength to strength.
Sounds like that works. You have consensus on the motion itself and a couple of additional volunteers. And that night is also a striking committee night. So at least we'll have some general framework for people knowing what that role entails. Vandy, are you? Go ahead, Leah. Oh, thumbs up.
Oh, let Vandy go, she was gonna say something.
No, I wasn't, I'm so sorry. My mom just like handed me something.
Okay, so you know what? Thank you. This is a lot of work. I can see this, particularly to Tanya's comment about two separate pieces. And I'm just wondering and asking that we, we don't, we, we would love takers. So as many as you want, because we could actually divide the work and, and be faster, because we've got such a short timeline. The other piece that I'm thinking about is because this is policy and governance, it will have to go back to the board table again. So we're going to need to be really tight. So I'm just wondering if I could perhaps encourage, entice, maybe to have a group and then divide the group so that they can work independently, sub-sub, and then come together. Because I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking we have got to have it nailed by December if we want to make it in the board, to accommodate board processes, but also to accommodate the students. Because Vandy, we, we start the election process in January, right when they get back, right? Like, holy crap. Sorry, did I just say that? I was like, ah, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that we're not rushing and that we're accommodating the students in their, in their needs.
So right now, we have Margot, Tanya, Joanna and Leah. I mean, you could potentially have one other person. Just we have to watch quorum for our subcommittees as well. So is there anybody else who would like to stick up their hand? And I don't see anybody. So, so with, oh, Donna, okay, awesome. And Donna, I may have missed saying your name in the first place. But so there you have a group of five plus the other awesome student trustees and David on the team. Joanna and then Leah, and then we should probably wrap up. And in your closing comments, could you just say whether we need to make a motion also to send the terms of reference through to the, to the board for approval as well? Or what are your thoughts on that? You said it's a living document, I think, earlier. And we would just append it to our striking committee process piece? Okay, yeah.
I, I don't think it needs to go to board. I, I would defer to those around the table. But terms of reference is not something that I believe that we have to go to board with.
Amy is on this thread, go ahead. And then we'll go back to Leah and Joanna for closing.
Yes, when it came to terms of reference for the OPSPHA representative, we determined that the best thing for that to be done was to append it to the committee's policy. That way, it's held in one place. But as an appendix, it can be amended freely. So it, it's not in the policy, it's appended.
Amy, do we need a motion to do that or we just?
Yes, we did. Yeah, we brought it to board on the 16th of June.
A lifetime away again.
It, it, it felt so long ago that Jean and I weren't sure if it actually went through.
So Joanna and Leah then.
Yeah, so just, I guess we need to make a friendly amendment to this motion because it says, and up to two additional trustees. So it'll be changed to up to three.
Are there any concerns? Okay, seeing none. And then Joanna and Leah, will you go back to that report that Jean and Amy made regarding the OPSPHA and just maybe replicate that for the board package? And we can send it through this meeting even? Are you nodding, by the way?
Sorry, I, I'm hoping to have some assistance with that, sorry. Because I'm not recalling what that looked like.
I can send it to you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Perfect. And Gail is on as well. And we talked about it during agenda setting, that she will be able to assist, I believe. Gail, go ahead.
If I may, Madam Chair, I can certainly help Leah pull together that report with the appropriate recommendation and include it the package for next week.
Rock star. Okay, there we go. Any other comments or questions? Great, sounds like we're good to move on to 3.4.3, Board Bylaws Re-Board Meeting Dates. And that is over to Tanya and Amy for up to 20 minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I was just checking the questions here. Okay, so if you recall, back in June, we had a board meeting. And we presented a report, which is appended to this week's report, which was called Board Bylaws Re-Meeting Schedule. In that report and in that meeting, we discussed moving our, well, revisiting our board meeting dates for the month of September. And we reached consensus in that, well, we put forward two motions. One of them was to move September's board meetings to September 8th, which was not the first Wednesday of September, but rather the first Wednesday after Labor Day. So that motion did go forward. And we also agreed to look at the wording in our bylaws that dictate when we could have our board meetings. So if, if everyone is, has the report that I shared in the Committee of the Whole folder. So the motion that we agreed to was be further resolved that the bylaw regarding the scheduling of board meetings be reviewed by the Governance Standing Committee and a report with recommendations come back to the board on September 8th, 2021. And if you recall, we amended that motion so that we could instead present it to the Committee of the Whole meeting this evening. So in our report, what, what we've done is we've included the current wording in our bylaws that state that the first and third Wednesdays of each month, September through June, public session commencing at 7:00. And that's when we'd have our board meetings. I know this language was a bit ambiguous because some people were unclear as to, you know, when does school start? When does, when is school vacation period and whatnot? So what we've come up with for recommended wording is that, and what I did in the report is I did, I basically copied and paste what's in our bylaws and included the recommended wording. And where it's been changed, I've highlighted it to green, italic, bold, so it stands out what the wording changes would be. So the proposed wording is just really to add more clarification and transparency to everyone. So that it now reads, or we're recommending it will read, "The regular meetings of the board shall be held at the head office of the Hilton District School Board on the first and third Wednesdays of each month from Labor Day in September through the end of June, with public session commencing at 7:00 PM, except when the first or third Wednesday falls during a school vacation period for students. Example, summer break, winter break, spring break, PA/PD days. In such cases, a regular meeting of the board will be rescheduled." The additional two sentences that we've added for further clarification is that, item number two, "If a meeting is required during a school vacation period for students, a special board meeting may be called." And the third one is, "If any regular meeting date falls on a high holy day of faith-based significance, the meeting date will be rescheduled to fall within the parameters outlined in Part 6, Regular Meetings, Section 1." So that's the proposed language. And then what I also included in the report is just some rationale to kind of explain why we use the language we did. And, and that is that even when we share our school calendars with And, and that is that even when we share our school calendars with the community, um, our first day of instruction happens after Labor Day. So in, in the public side, school really starts after Labor Day, not um, school is open for session on the very first day of September. Um, to also add clarification is that I know many families use that last week before Labor Day, uh, just as their last week of summer vacation before school starts. It's their last hurrah before settling down and hitting the books. Um, and now, I mean, it seems like a big issue that we're changing our bylaws, but this isn't something that happens every year, obviously. The last time this happened was this year and last year. And I think we paid particular attention to it only because we were in pandemic years, and uh obviously we had lots to discuss. But prior to this, um, this issue only came up in uh twenty fifteen, prior to that, twenty ten, because as we all know, calendar switch from year to year. And we don't anticipate having this issue again until twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, so. Um, I know we've had discussion insofar as that it should be on the first Wednesday of September, regardless of kids are in school or not. Um, but I think that was more of an issue only this year and last year, again, because of COVID. And I think if, as trustees, we do wanna have a meeting before kids are officially in school, we can always call a special meeting. We've called special meetings in December, we've called them in July and August. There's nothing preventing us from calling a special meeting. Um, and I think another reason why we want the bylaws um a bit clearer, it's not only for us as trustees to fully understand them, because I know myself, I couldn't understand them exactly last year, and I question this, but it's also for the public to fully understand when we meet. So with that in mind, I also included some excerpts of the Education Act to define uh what the school year is. And really, the school year is for when kids are in session, so after Labor Day. So with that in mind, um, if uh, if anyone wants to discuss the recommended, suggested wording, um, Amy and I would uh be open to your suggestions and feedback.
I just wanna add one thing um before we start answering questions. And, and that is that specifically that when we normally have to have a board meeting and we call a special board meeting, it's because of a specific issue. It's, it's a special board meeting because we're not doing all of the regular um scheduling uh reports that we normally get. The meeting starts, we get to the meat and potatoes of the issue, and then the meeting is ended. We don't add in um extra items, we don't add in extra motions. Special board meetings are specifically for a, a certain reason. And uh you'll all remember that in the summer of twenty twenty, we had several special board meetings, and they were all to deal with what are we going to do uh about starting school up? What are we going to do about what the province keeps changing their ma- mind about? How are we going to get our schools open? And they were very specific. We weren't discussing um committee reports, we weren't discussing um at anything other than the specific items that were on the agenda. And generally speaking, if we're going to need a meeting in the summer, it would be a special board meeting, because that is exactly the type of thing that would we, we would just be discussing when school is not in session. Um, so I just wanna add that uh little bit of um rationale to what uh Tanya already discussed.
Thanks, Amy. Um, Tracy, would you like me to manage the queue of questions, or would you like?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I see that Joanna is uh first in line. Go ahead, Joanna.
Okay, thank you uh through your vice chair. Um, Tanya, I, and uh Amy, I really like how you've um uh laid out all the information in a very logical um manner. Love the report. Um, I do have a question, though, that, that comes up now, and you know, it says here, "Regular meetings shall be held at the head office." And I'm wondering where the possibility of um going hybrid or if we need to be totally online comes in, how that can be um addressed?
Okay, so that's a great question, Joanna. And I think for our mandate for the motion that the trustees approved, our mandate was only to look at the wording specific to um the first and third Wednesdays. So I think that's perhaps another item we can take another look at, so that's a really good point. But it wasn't part of our mandate for today. Andrea?
Yes, thank you for this report, and I thank you for the uh language recommendations. Um, my issue uh with the way that um uh with uh not, with having it specifically, uh, the, the issue with the wording as it was previously, um, I had a hard time, and legally, we had a hard time uh with our staff actually working on those days, to say that they were basically not working days. And so the way you've written it now that it's uh, has to be after Labor Day, that um takes care of that issue. Uh, so I feel that we won't be um inadvertently insulting, uh, you know, our nine to ten thousand staff who are uh putting in a day's work, um, because uh we're, we're recognizing that we want these things to happen after Labor Day. Um, so I ha- I don't have a problem supporting that with that new language. Um, I mean, a philosophical question always is, uh, you know, if we're, if we're having our meetings for the parent group or the broader community that doesn't really, um, the, the work continues on, uh, but I, I can support, I can support this, because I know that generally, without COVID, our September meetings are generally not that packed. If they were packed, I would be thinking differently. But generally, generally, they're not. And uh just uh as aside with Joanna's question about hybrid, uh, there is um, in the Education Act, it actually says that you have to have your meetings, uh, the director and the chair uh have to be, they constitute uh the place of the meeting. And right now, we have um uh a, a legal amendment to that act saying that we can be uh actually fully online until, I believe, November twenty twenty-two. Um, so uh it doesn't actually matter for, as long as you're not the chair of the board, um, any trustee uh has full rights uh to be able to um attend meetings remotely. It's no problem.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. Um, Tracy?
Okay, uh, thank you for the report and all of the rationale and everything. Um, my question is, well, two things. Firstly, I was gonna say, based on the motion that was passed, I think there is enough wiggle room to also address the hybrid, uh, if it needs to be addressed in here, because it talks about the scheduling of the meetings, which I think could also be interpreted to uh include where it's happening, just so we have, if we're gonna change it, we can do it all in one fell swoop. Uh, and the, but I think the more substantive one is just with respect to number three, about the high holy days of faith-based significance. And I just wonder whether by looking at that one right now, we're in any way encroaching on um the motion that was made at the last board meeting um for staff to look at the school calendar uh with respect to high holy days. Um, I, I wouldn't in any way want to kinda prejudice the outcome of, of that work.
Uh, I, I can respond to that. Uh, as, as you know, because you're on the, the committee, I actually wrote that paragraph before the motion came to board about the um, the recognition in, in the way that the calendar is done for school. But the um, the school year calendar is actually independent of our meeting schedule. They're, they're not um the same thing. Our meeting schedule um may fall into many of the um school year calendar things, like we change our meeting date in March because of March break and things like that. But um our, our meeting um calendar schedule should not be entirely entwined with the school year calendar. It's good for them to be aligned, but not entwined. Do, do you see the nuance there? Um, I hope.
Yes, although it is stretching my thinking at this particular moment in time.
It's eight twenty-two. It's stretching all of our thinking.
I just wonder about kind of the philosophical piece behind it and whether we will unduly influence that other groups' work by doing it now, because we're saying we would move it based on high ho- holidays.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, I just wouldn't want it.
I, I don't mind taking it out, but that, it just means that we'll have to um amend the bylaws again at a, at a later date, but we'll probably end up amending the bylaws because of the location of meetings anyway. So I don't mind taking it out if that makes you more comfortable.
Yeah, I, I would agree with Amy. I have no worry about um removing item number three, only because I was the one, I along with Margot, put in the motion about the high holy days. Um, so I think um we can revisit item number three if that would make you more comfortable, Tracy.
I think so, I, I just wanna be very respective of that other process that is uh taking place. And philosophically, as a board, it might be great to land in a similar kind of spot. And we haven't had the luxury of kinda hashing that out, because there is so much that goes with that conversation potentially, so thank you, Leah.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Tracy. Um, Leah, you're next.
Thank you. Um, I have one sort of question about um some wording, and I just wanna draw your attention to it as it, it makes me feel um a little uncomfortable. In um section one, um, uh, the language of during a school vacation period, and then your examples, summer break, winter break, spring break, but P A P D days are not, to me, a school vacation period. Um, there's staff working, so I think there's like a little bit of, um, you know, it, it's not very clear. For me, it would sound better if it was a student vacation period, because it's, the students don't go to P A P D.
It says for students.
Vacation period, a school, oh, pardon me.
Yeah, we did, yeah, so that was one of the clarification we did add, only because it was very confusing. So we did add the words for students.
Okay.
Vacation period for students.
And my, uh, my eyes just jumped right over that, because I was getting stuck on school vacation period.
Yeah.
That was like, that to me screams everybody?
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for your clarity.
Okay, did you have anything else, or no? Okay, so I don't see anyone else with any other questions, so um, so what Amy and I will do is we'll, because obviously we have to present this to the board at a next board meeting, because we are amending our bylaws. So what we have, um, what we'll propose is what we've agreed to, and those are items number one and two, to amend our bylaw. We will not include item number three, um, and perhaps that's something we can revisit uh when some, that other committee discusses uh the impact, the school calendar creation and the impact of high holy days, so we'll, we'll remove that. So um I want to thank everyone uh for their input and their support, and thank you, Amy, for clarifying, you're so good at this. And so uh you, you will see this at the uh, at the next board meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. So Gail, that's another uh heads up that uh there is that second uh addition to the agenda package. Go ahead, Gail.
I'd be happy to work with the draft that Tanya and Amy have already created. If they would like to forward it to me, I'll include it in next week's board package.
That a thumbs up, everyone? Okay, super, thanks very much. That jumps us ahead quite a bit. Um, okay, we're moving on then to item three point five, which is promoting the OPSA survey. Jean, go ahead. And uh there is quite a bit, the OPSA materials are in the folder. I'll just put the link in, Jean, as you start.
Thank you very much uh through the vice chair to everyone. Um, in, on August the tenth, we received this information from OPSA. Um, and um, as you know, they have already completed a paper entitled Transitioning From The COVID School Experience. It was this discussion paper that reflected on the initial thinking of the association's membership, that being all of us, uh, from the firsthand accounts of remote learning during the pandemic. And that discussion paper revealed two things. One, that uh students were um largely unable um to profit from a re- from remote forms of learning. It also revealed that there are several innovative practices in pedagogy and leadership that uh emerged and, and should be preserved and implemented on a broader scale. So OPSA then decided, well, let's get the public's view on this, let's get a public survey out. And they've asked all of the uh OPSA member school boards to help by um disseminating it. Um, this is an online survey to help inform public education advocacy to the provincial government through the twenty-one, twenty-two school year and beyond. The survey wa- was opened at that point, and it's open until November thirty, twenty twenty-one. There are eight questions in the survey, it takes ten minutes to complete, and anyone participating in the survey will receive an active link to see how others have responded to the questionnaire. So I like that they have added that feature, so that anyone who does take the time has the ability to then connect and learn more about this. Um, and so in bringing this forward tonight, and I might add, there was one other uh part of this. OPSA did uh circulate to us a discussion paper with a bunch of questions that we could, as a board, discuss at some time, not necessarily this evening, but at some time, we could uh have a discussion on some of these questions. And that discussion paper, I think, is probably in that link that was just shared by Tracy. But I guess I bring this forward tonight, because um the question is, how do w- w- we circulate? Everything we need to circulate this, whether it be that we uh put it out on Twitter or put it out on Facebook, or circulate it through our uh respective school council chairs or circulate it through our super council people? We have everything, it's all provided by um OPSA, it's, 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 it's ready, set, to go. It's just, we need to find a way to um and, and discuss as a group how we would like to see it rolled out, so that we could have the residents of Halton participate in this proven, province-wide. participate in this province-wide survey. So I open it up to everyone at this point to gather your insight and ideas on how we might engage our communities in this opportunity. Thank you.
I can just start. As I've said before, silence makes me a little squirmy. So I'll just get things rolling. And Jean, I think it's a question to Director or to Curtis, just to ask whether you see a possibility that kind of similar to the LTAP notice of consultation which went out to the HGSP community. I recognize that's internal, but I wonder whether there is the possibility to do a similar thing for this opportunity?
Certainly, we could take a look at that as a board. I will bring it to the senior team, and we can talk about how the best go about doing that.
What do you think, Jean? And other OPSA people?
Yes, any way that we could be assisted beyond our own grassroots of connections with people, that being through our school council chairs or through our super council members. Any way that we could be connected so that we could support this initiative would be appreciated. I wonder if Donna, trustee Danielli, I don't want to put you on the spot, but would you have any insights on that?
Ditto.
Thank you.
You said it so well. I agree. Anything that we can do to get it out. We're limited as trustees to our social channels. So anything that Director Ennis and the communications staff can do would be gratefully appreciated.
We will be happy to look at that.
Thank you. It could also, if it's not a, it could also be through a social media post, and then trustees can jump onboard and like and retweet and all of that kind of business. Go ahead, Heather.
Would we consider translating it into various languages or expect the folks to just Google translate it?
Heather, that's a really good question. I don't believe that OPSA had set up for it for translation. Sorry, Andrea, did you want to add something to that?
I was just going to say, you know, clicking on the link, there is, it's in English. So only if they would have a translator as part of their, an app that they would go through, would they be able to do it. Perhaps that's a question for OPSA to see if they have some recommendations for that because certainly we deal more than just in one language. And I'm sure that, while it also, they would also need to get any responses in other languages also translated into English to help collate into a summary response.
I'm happy to follow that up with OPSA tomorrow and let Director Ennis know of the response that we received. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other question, comments, input on that?
I would only just say through the vice chair, should Director Ennis find that the senior admin is a little bit wary of supporting like a second party's survey, if you would, that being OPSA's survey? If they're not supportive of that, and we don't have a vehicle through the board to disseminate this, we really need a plan B before we stop this conversation tonight. So I wonder if, what's our backup plan?
So there is, I think we just need one of us to step up and, I guess, lead the charge. Go ahead, Curtis.
I was just wondering what some of the other boards are doing in terms of helping to promote this survey.
I will add that to my question for tomorrow's conversation with OPSA. Thank you.
Okay, and then Jean, I mean, I think we would just need one person to create the message and then agreement from everybody that they would send it out through their Twitter or if you're meeting with school councils. I certainly agree to circulate. And Kathy has started a message here that could be built on condensed with the survey link in there. So do you think firstly, that's okay? And secondly, is that something that you or somebody would be, yes, that you would be willing to create that kind of two liner with the link in it that we can go with?
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to do that.
Is there any concerns from any trustees about then kind of taking that forward and circulating it? Okay, so it sounds like we have a commitment to do that. Does that sound like a good plan B? And in fact, plan A and B might work together anyway. Okay, excellent. Thanks, Jean. So we'll go to 3.6, which is Public Accessibility Committee of the Whole Meetings. And I will pop the link to the document in there as Andrea is talking.
Yeah, so I'm on YouTube right now and like just have sort of my summary screen up. And we have one person watching, and I'm assuming that's probably like Kevin. So we have these meetings, these Committee of the Whole Meetings, and we, you know, stream them thinking that we are reaching the thousands in Halton. And we are not. We are reaching nobody. We are all wearing our orange shirts basically for ourselves at this point. Nobody, nobody's seeing our shirts and our, you know, the unity around Truth and Reconciliation Day tomorrow. And I personally think that because we are not recording our meetings that we are not really being as transparent and as accountable as we should be. And I would like to encourage everybody around the table to look at, you know, recording these. I know that we have, we are more casual here. But I think that the business of the board needs to be more transparent, and we need to be more accountable. And we do a lot of work within these committees. And if people can't be watching exactly from six until nine on one Wednesday of the month, and it moves around quite a bit, that we are, we're not providing the service we need to our community. So, Amy, I see you have something to say.
Yes, I'm in favor of increasing our transparency on that. We used to video voice record Committee of the Whole Meetings in my first term. And I see no reason not to be doing that. It's of the public's interest and concern. And we are their elected representatives, and they need to know what we're saying when we are in quorum.
And a question and a comment. So my question is, why did we stop recording? If we used to record, why did we stop recording?
We stopped because the quality of the recordings, this was before we had the updated cameras. The quality of the recordings was such that you could barely make it out. And so they stopped recording them, and they continued recording the board meetings themselves because that was felt that that was where decisions were being made. And so we did continue with that. And then when we came onboard with the new video system, there was discussion around the trustee table about starting recording again. And we did not reach consensus on that. So I'm glad to see us discussing this again. I think that it's something we should never have stopped.
I agree. I think it's good. But again, my comment was, that was my question. My comment is, I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing for them to see a more, I'll say, human side to us by using first names, which I think is nice to have this less formal atmosphere. I think sometimes it flows more smoothly just because you're not always thinking in the back of your mind as clearly about what you're saying. So I fully support recording. I'm surprised that we did before and had stopped. So I think it's an awesome idea.
Tracy? You're on mute, Tracy.
Excellent. I just wanted to hearken back to our discussions a year ago when we talked about this. And I remember there was some, I guess, reluctance to lose that kind of less formal and there was a feeling that we have the ability to talk more candidly. And it's my hope that, you know, we have a year and a bit of this meeting format under our belt. I hope there is some additional comfort. And just that, the fact that we're broadcasting to Kevin. Kevin did also, I guess, raise the concern that he's the only one watching in just that kind of accountability piece. My only question, when we go back into the boardroom, I guess, the piece that I wouldn't like to lose is kind of that ability to get up and move to, you know, the tables at the back or to break out into small groups. And maybe we can do that virtually as well. But I'd just like to ensure that we still have that, the ability to do that. We did that a lot with multi-year plans in Committee of the Whole. For example, I have those small working groups. So I support it. I feel comfortable with it for all of the reasons that have been said, just with those caveats. Thanks.
Margot?
I'm back again. I just wonder, like, so now that you say that, Tracy, I remember having this conversation. I'd forgotten about it. But I, I just wonder, we don't have to lose the informal. And again, for my, from my point of view, I always go from the fact that we are always on show, whether it's recorded or not. People can watch this whenever they want to and can record it themselves if they want to. So I don't know. I think, I agree with you that I just don't want, I don't want to lose the piece of the informal piece of this. But I don't necessarily think that we have to. But that's just my two cents again.
Tanya? Tanya, you're on mute.
Good thing that wasn't caught on camera. So here we go. So last year, when we amended our policy about electronic meetings, there was the mandate from the Ministry of Education insofar as that we had to make our board meetings and our Committee of the Whole Meetings and any committee of the board available to the public. So, you know, we're doing good with our board meetings. We record them and they're saved and people can watch them. And then we look at Committee of the Whole, where people can watch us live. We're just not saving it for future viewing. How does that relate to CAC and audit and PIC? Because technically, those meetings are supposed to be available to the public. Do those committees, because they fall under the umbrella of the board, do they have to be available to the public as they happen? Or do, or can they be made available after the fact? So I don't know if you know the answer, but I'd be curious because I think whatever we decide for Committee of the Whole, we should probably also look to extend that to the other three committees of the board.
Well, I can tell you that CAC is video voice recorded. You can go back and watch any one, and that's been like that for a long time. PIC, I don't, I don't believe it's recorded. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm on the PIC committee. They are recorded. They started to record early this year. Yeah.
Okay, there you go. And so an audit would definitely be streamed. And I'm just looking up to see if they're recorded. But they are not recorded. Sorry, Ayman is calling me. So that would be, we probably should be recording the public session of audit and posting that, I would think. Especially since it's audit, we're trying to be accountable and transparent, right? So, yeah, I don't know. Thoughts on that?
Sir, are you asking me or?
On perhaps Amy, the new Chair of Audit, or Leah, the former Chair of Audit, or?
Oh, I can respond. I agree. I think we ought to be recording. Our meetings are very short for the public session, usually under an hour. But there's no reason why we couldn't be recording those.
Now, are they streamed?
Yes.
Over YouTube?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so, okay. Kevin, did you have anything you wanted to say at all to all this? Okay, I mean, that's the other thing. If it becomes an issue to be livestreamed, but it could still be recorded because I believe we can record any meeting ourselves. So if that live streaming portion isn't for some reason available, we could always save and record it. I mean, save and post it later because our meetings, especially things like audit, happens during the day when people aren't necessarily able to watch it. But if it's already being done, I guess that's fine. But just at those times that it might not be available. And Margot, go ahead.
So my question could partially be Kevin. But I'm just wondering, so playing around with my Google meets, I can have the closed captions on. Can, once it's on YouTube, can those be put on as easily as this? I know sometimes YouTube's closed captions aren't always as accurate. But when I put it on, Kevin, when you were talking earlier- when you were talking earlier, it was exactly, you've got a very clear voice. So it was exactly what you said. So I'm just wondering if we are doing this, because this was something that came up in both the Accessibility Committee as well as CAC. Are we closed captioning our meetings? And if we're not, could we use the button, like if you're recording it, I don't know how we can do this, to YouTube, can you press the CC button on Google Meets to make it work for the recording? Ah, Gord, Gord, you'll know the answer.
Go for it Kevin. Gord, did you want to, go ahead?
Well, my only comments would be, I apologize. I've been watching the Jays. They're up. And you can tell I may or may not have spent an hour on the driving range this evening after work. But yeah, no, and I wanted to thank Kevin. Kevin has spent folks hours researching into the closed captioning. So I do want to thank Kevin. On behalf of the senior team and the trustees, thank you Kevin for looking into this. And what Kevin has said is very accurate. We can do live closed captioning. However, we have to be remote. So I will leave it to the trustees to discuss whether or not they want to be remote 100%. And we can do live closed captioning if we're remote. If we are hybrid, we cannot do that. And Kevin has researched Toronto, Toronto District School Board, Toronto Catholic, Hamilton, Peel. None of them do live captioning and mostly because it is due to the limitations of YouTube that most boards use. So and I just, I got a couple of messages from Gail. If you want to record this meeting and post it to the board's website YouTube channel, that's a piece of cake because Kevin is already here doing a livestream. So Kevin, I believe, has already confirmed that we can record this, no problem, and do it. I believe Tanya said that we already do livestream PIC, the four meetings, Tanya, four meetings a year, right? So Kevin is already involved in that and Aiman Flahat is aware that he's going to connect with Kevin about the dates when the PIC meetings are finalized. So that can be done again if we want to post that. And then the other, only other question I have, and I see Amy on the line, I'm not sure, has Kevin done the livestream for public audit? I'm not sure about that. So Amy, if he has, I don't know because I've never really participated in the public audit. So.
Well, I'm always remote at the Audit Committee, so I'm, I'm not actually seeing who's in the room. But the intent was for Audit to be livestreamed, the same, the same as PIC and CAC. So if it's not happening, then that's, that's news to me. But I think it is happening because Carrie Salemi always tells us whether or not we have questions from the public. So I think it is happening.
Kevin will be able to answer that. Kevin, are we livestreaming Audit? Then we're not, then we're not livestreaming Audit. If Kevin's not livestreaming, folks, Kevin is it.
Oh dear. Well, we thought we were.
Well, you might not be livestreaming, but you may be taking questions from the public. I'm not sure if Roxana's on the line. You might be taking questions from the public, but they might just be coming in before the meeting. But that's not really, I see Andrea, her and I are on the same page on this one. It's not really the intent of, you know, watching a live meeting. So Kevin, I'll, I'll connect with Roxana to make sure that you're aware of, is it monthly Audit Meetings?
Audit is four meetings a year.
Okay, so Kevin, we're gonna have-
It's on a Tuesday afternoon, so it's not an evening.
So it's not night. That's great Kevin. That's a plus one for you. So we'll have to get those dates. And I'm assuming, Gail, can you make sure? I, I don't know if it's Gail, to make sure Kevin gets those dates. If someone can make sure Kevin gets those dates. Thank you. Sorry for coming in on your meeting. I hope that's okay.
And Andrea, do you want to sum up and we can close this topic?
I, I'm really glad that we seem to all be of the same mind here that, you know, our transparency and accountability is really important as, as a board, as public figures, as people who are governing this very large Board of Education. So thank you all for your time and your excellent feedback. And we've solved some mysteries. And we're moving forward. So thank you.
Yeah, and thank you Kevin for raising this and also raising the bar with all of the livestreaming and closed captioning and et cetera. And Gord, thanks for joining. And David, so your question was answered, who streams Audit? Kevin will be, will be there. It's great that it's a daytime meeting. So we're going to move on to item 3.7. I'm just, I'm very aware of the time. So other business, we did have a couple of things that popped onto the agenda after it was circulated. So in the interest of time, I would just ask those two groups. One is Amy and Jean regarding the draft Terms of Reference for OPSA Director. And the other one is Margot and Tanya relating to that Calendar Policy Review Motion. Whether those are time sensitive or whether they can go on to our next agenda. Margot, you have your hand up already. So go ahead.
No, no. So it wasn't a but. That doesn't, we don't need to discuss that because that's a staff thing that's being done. So I think we're okay. But I did have something else, but it could come under question and comment because it's a quick one.
Okay, and how about Amy and Jean? Go ahead Jean.
Yeah, a quick little review of the past here is, in fact, we dealt with that on that very item. The Terms of Reference for the OPSA Order of Director Position back on June 16th and it was approved. So we feel that that's in gray and can be removed from our order paper. Thank you.
Okay, yes, that is how it popped up, isn't it? Because it was on the May, it's still on our order paper. So then that will be, it's gray and it will be removed. Oh wow, great work. Was there any other, other business? Hey, seeing none, we'll go on to trustee Q and C. And I just want to say that we have no public questions at this time, just as a heads up. So go ahead trustee, questions and comments. Margot, yep.
I'm popping on a latte. So this is just, I was going to bring this up at the board meeting and I kind of, it slipped my mind. But as some of you are aware, the city of Burlington is renaming the park next to what was Ryerson School. I am a silent participant on that board. I think it's really important that we don't mix school and city business. So they asked me to be on it and I spoke with Andrea and it was agreed that I would go, but my position there is just to bring information back to you as to what's going on and not give any input whatsoever because that's their decision. Just as the naming of the school is our decision. But I will update you on the process. There are four people, including myself, four people on the naming committee, Denise Beard, who is the representative from the city, Stephen Paquette, who is from the school board as far, but it's from his indigenous perspective, he's been asked to be there. And somebody from Halton Equity and Inclusion, I think. They have looked at the names provided by the city. And they have also looked at their criteria for naming. The one thing that they have decided is that they will not name this, the, the park after a person, but rather focus on either its historical or geographical significance within the city. So they're still going away to think about it, but the one thing they have decided, and they told me that it's shareable, they will not be naming it after a person. So that was just a quick update for you all.
Thank you. And thank you for going to, to those sessions and looping us in. That's awesome. Okay, are there any other trustee questions and comments? Okay, I don't see any. And Andrea, I'm not sure if you're looking also at the public Q and A document? Just to double check here.
Yeah, I have it up and since there's only like one person watching, which is probably Kevin, I'm not surprised that nobody's popped on.
So we double-
No, it's me.
Oh, it was you. It was Gord.
Excellent. So there are no public questions then for Committee of the Whole and we have made it through our agenda. I would just encourage people, the next Committee of the Whole session is just in two weeks. So if you have any topics that you want to see on that agenda, please, please let me know. I'm going to put in the chat box just our kind of tracking spreadsheet. If you want to add any items in there, tentatively, please do. And then lastly, everybody, as you know, the orange shirt day is tomorrow. And I did receive at the end of the day from the Circle for Aboriginal Relations an email. And just a couple of things in there I wanted to share from their executive who are Aboriginal or indigenous peoples. Let us continue to observe critically, to listen with our whole body, to learn, to share and to remember every child matters. We can honor the children and survivors by working together towards a better way. So I, that makes me think an awful lot about how to not only wear the yellow shirts tomorrow, but move beyond to make sure the truth is, is known and towards reconciliation. So I just wanted to say that and go ahead Heather.
Thank you. That quote that you just read out, can you please send that to us? I think I'd like to use that as my social media.
Sure. And with the appropriate citations from, from SIFAR, from Sandra. I will send you the whole email because it also has kind of links in there to other materials. So I'm on it. I'll do that right after the meeting. And so seeing no other questions or comments, can we have a motion to adjourn, please? Go, thanks Jean. In trustee tradition, is there any discussion? No? Okay, by consensus, then we will adjourn the meeting. And everybody have a wonderful evening and a great learning day tomorrow. See you later alligators. And Kevin, we can go offline.